Mr. Board Secretary, has this meeting been advertised according to the Open Public Meeting Act?
Yes, it has, Mr.
Everybody please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Balka.
Here.
Mrs. Backo.
Here.
Mrs. Blume.
Here.
Mr. Brzezinski.
Here.
Mr. Syack. Mrs. DePinto. Mrs. Trapp. Mr. Walsh.
Here.
And Mr. McEnroe.
I am present.
And Mrs. Trapp is here.
Okay. Once I have a motion going up into executive, you can read the resolution.
Motion to go ahead.
It's all moved.
Any second?
Second.
Okay, can you please read the resolution?
Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, P.L., 1975 permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body of opinion that such circumstances presently exist, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education, Borough of Sable, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey as follows: The public shall be excluded from discussion of and the action upon the herein after specified subject matters; general nature of the subject matter to be discussed is as follows: Personnel, including but not limited to a gender item, attorney-client privilege, various legal issues associated with the Sable Wall Memorial High School Football Program. It is anticipated at this time that the above stated subject matter shall be made public at such time as the need for nondisclosure no longer exists. This resolution shall take effect immediately.
Roll call.
Mr. Balka.
Yes.
Mrs. Backo.
Yes.
Mrs. Blume.
Yes.
Mr. Brzezinski.
Yes.
Mrs. Trapp.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
The board will turn to executive. I apologize for the slight delay coming out of executive. Ms. DeAndrea, has this meeting been advertised according to the Open Public Meeting Act?
Yes, it has, Mr. McEnroe.
Okay, at this time, everybody please stand and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. The roll call, please.
Mr. Balka.
Here.
Mrs. Backo.
Here.
Mrs. Blume.
Here.
Mrs. Brzezinski.
Here.
Mr. Syack.
Here.
Mrs. DePinto. Mrs. Trapp.
Here.
Mr. Walsh.
Here.
And Mr. McEnroe.
Executive session, please.
Evening in executive session. Under personnel included but not limited to a gender item, and the second item attorney client privilege, various legal issues associated with the Sable Wall Memorial High School Football Program.
Thank you. Dr. Labby, do you have some presentations?
Yes. We have several major presentations today related to the budget. We have our curriculum and instruction budget presentation that will be made by Dr. Shetty Ak. We also have our technology budget presentation that will be made by Mr. Glock Malloy and Mrs. Sandy Paul. However, we have a very, very special presentation. Couple of weeks ago, we presented to you a video production on Vision 2030. Mr. Kaiserman and his students got together and they produced this phenomenal video. Well, the young lady that was a part of that video production crew also had the opportunity during the fall, and then I believe she revised that a little bit later on through the year, to shoot, edit, and produce what I feel is an incredible video. The work she put into it is nothing less than professional, and I can't thank her enough for the hard work she put into the video. She actually contacted me. She had a lot of media coverage with it as well, but she contacted me and she said, "Dr. Labby, I'd really love the opportunity to show this video to the Board of Education and the public." And you know what? I think it was very fitting. And Kennedy McFagin, thank you so much for the video. We're going to have an opportunity to thank you again, but Andrew, can you please play the video?
The season's been cold often amid allegations of hate.
Seven arrested students are suspended.
As all eyes are on our little central Jersey town, the world has been giving a jaded negative impression of our football program. In our hearts, we know that they have been a source of pride to our school and community for over 20 years. When Hurricane Sandy devastated parts of Sable, the football team, cheerleaders, and coaches were on the front lines of one of our apps, helping residents. They cleaned houses, sorted their possessions, and lent a helping hand whenever they could.
Older lady that we were helping, and we were throwing out her TV stand and all of the stuff, and she started crying because she had, she lived there the whole, her whole life. She grew up in that house, and it was just really upsetting because just seeing her cry, and then we were there to hold her and have her be a shoulder to cry on. We helped gutted the houses and took all the furniture out and brought it onto the street with all the ruined furniture and stuff.
We went around cleaning people's houses and helping them take some of their houses. There was this one guy who we helped take this TV in his basement, out of his basement because he couldn't wait on his own, and he just expressed to us like how much it meant to home, that like we were not only worried about ourselves, but we were worried about everybody else in the community, and then we went around helping everybody in the community. And he just, he really showed how much it meant to home, and he took a picture of us and he sent it to the newspaper because he wanted this to be in the newspaper. And it just meant a lot, like someone that he was in need.
Not only did the football program provide support when the town was hit hard by Hurricane Sandy, but for the past four years, they have helped feed the homeless for Thanksgiving. The food was made by assistant coach Jim Nardone and served by our very own Sable Bomber football players. Sean McIntosh, one of our very own Sable Bomber football players, is a coach for the Pop Warner team in the Sable Lavercombs. Sean is a senior and was a starting tight end for the Bombers.
It's made me have a great sense of pride in the culture, but I didn't know that these kids that are in seventh and eighth grade are looking up to me as a leader to them and a mentor and someone like a god in the right direction.
This year, the football program is planning on feeding the homeless at the Salvation Army, and we go as we'll always promise to wrap utensils for their soup kitchen. Additionally, they are planning to help the upcoming residents in Sable to their home. So the next half we turn on to news and hear something negative about the Sable Bomber Football Program. I want you to remember all the good they've done with this town, and that more mistake by a few does not negate all the good that they have done, nor does it diminish the commitment and character that they have displayed through it all.
Kennedy, please rise for us. Once again, Kennedy.
Take care.
The quality of the work on this video demonstrates clearly what an amazing student you are. The message that you sent with the video also demonstrates what an incredible citizen you are to this school and to this community, and on behalf of the board, we can't thank you enough for representing our school district and our community as well as you have. Thank you so much, Kennedy. And Mr. Glock Malloy, are you ready? Board of Education members, now I present to you our Director of Special Projects Technology and our Chief Technology Officer, Mr. Eric Glock Malloy, and Ms. Sandra Paul for the technology proposed budget for 2015-2016.
Evening, everyone. As most of you know, this was a new experience. We have a new superintendent. I was new to the technology department, and Sandy has been with us for many years. I had worked with the principals, the supervisors, the technology staff, the teachers, the business administrator. This budget comprised the needs and goals of many buildings and many directions within the district, but at the end of the day, we were really focusing on a variety of specific items that we're looking to carry forward into next year. First and foremost, we're looking to move the district further into the 21st century. And to do that, some of the key factors that we were looking to focus on is to make sure that the technology that we have and the technology that we're looking to expand to in the coming years are sustainable and highly available to all the stakeholders in the district, be it the students, the teachers, the parents, the administration, or even the board. And this takes on a variety of different focuses. Within the course of this budget season, working with Dr. Labby and with Amidio, we had looked at a couple of areas that were spread across the district into various budget accounts, and we targeted that these were probably technology items, although they had been in building level or department level accounts. So this first summation of accounts are all accounts that did not previously exist in technology. They existed elsewhere in the budget, so these aren't pure increases, but these are now going to be encompassed within the technology department. Specific to those guidance, purchase service guidance is going to include Power School, which we've had for a number of years, and we're also looking to include our registration software. I know Dr. Labby spoke about this in our last board meeting. That would be encompassed within that first account. Special services and special education. IEP Direct is an existing software that we have, and RTIM Direct, which I actually had the pleasure to have here Dr. Labby speak about at TechSpo this past week, is a new software program for our INRS process that we're looking to bring onboard for, I believe, the end of this year and into next year. Within our curriculum focus, high school courses, in the past, we've used Apex. I will defer to Dr. Shetty Ak on that, but I believe we're going to continue to look towards that going into the future. We're also looking at a curriculum and evaluation system. Currently, we're using Teachcape for our evaluation system. Our goal for next year is to look at a system that will be more encompassing and not only handle our teacher evaluations, but also encompass a system in which we can publish our curriculum, publish our lesson plans, and allow for a more streamlined approach to how we work with curriculum down to the classroom. One of the programs that we were looking at and exploring on course would really allow us to upload our curriculum into an online system, and as teachers prepare their lesson plans for the week, they'll be able to go and pull resources and particular content standards directly from the system, add it into their lesson plans, and as soon as it hits their lesson plans, it'll actually automatically publish into a website where any homework that they list or any classwork that they wish to have parents and students see will automatically go there in a fairly seamless streamlined fashion. Within our central office system, some of these items have existed in prior years, our auto-call notification system. The other items here are all new items that we're looking to bring in. A human resource management system, which would fall under Ms. Reese's department, as well as a health center software, and a substitute software package, which I believe at this time we're looking potentially at Aesop, would fall under Mr. DeAndrea's department. The basic process here is we're looking to automate a lot of features and to allow the process that goes on in the back end in the business, in the central office, to be more streamlined and efficient for all staff and for parents, so that we have basically a 21st century business office as well as a 21st century curricular process. Along with that, we also have our payroll and budgetary system personnel package, which has existed in prior accounts in other departments. Something that I had actually met with Amidio and with Dennis Pantoliano a couple of weeks ago, was we were looking to find a way to inventory what we have in the district, be it technology, be it paper towels. And Dennis and I had sat down and looked at a couple of different software programs and found a few that would fit the needs of the district, and basically for a very nominal cost, we would be able to bring in a software package that would allow us to track all of the assets and inventory within the district, and as individual buildings need different inventory items, they'd simply fill out an online request, much like they do for maintenance requests right now. It would go to central receiving, and our members of central receiving would be able to send it out to the district, all using scanners and barcodes, basically allowing us to manage a fairly large asset system that we have within the district, write down, again, to paper towels, to computers, to buses, if you wanted to. The next set of accounts that we're looking at were all existing accounts within technology, and I can allow Mr. DeAndrea to explain this a little bit better, but we had looked at this early on in the year with professional services and with software and licensing and purchase technical services. We had really looked at what was falling into those and what should be categorized, be it curricular software, be it actual companies that we're bringing in for development or maintenance work, and we re-categorized a lot of items. So there is shifts up and down between these accounts, but when we get to the final budget, you'll actually see where our complete increases are, but much of this red to green movement is items that existed from this year and even in 1314, and were simply moved to different departments, or not to different departments, but different accounts. And Amidio could certainly shed some more light onto that when he goes deeper into the budget presentations with the board. Within our professional service accounts, we have a couple of key items. This is not an extensive list, but our Dell support, we are predominantly a Dell district at this point for our PCs. This allows us to have our technicians maintain our warranties and replacement parts. Part of that curriculum and evaluation system that I had spoken about before included a training component. Network maintenance, for network maintenance that expands beyond the ability of our current technology staff, mass projects within the district, we do often outsource those, so we do have a budgetary line item that allows us to cover those costs. Part of Dr. Labby's vision for the district is making sure that our smart boards are mounted within our classes to allow for ease of use of students and teachers, so a mounting account is created within there. Our telephone maintenance system, our current system to allow us to maintain it when it breaks, and printer and toner services, which is basically an agreement that we have with an outside company, which allows us to get toner into the district and to repair our printers when they break. Then our purchase technical services, one of the largest items within this account is our computer system and server licenses. This includes Microsoft Windows, our VMware licenses, and a massive amount of other licenses that we need to maintain the infrastructure within the district. Management software, what we are looking for particularly here is management of our Chromebook fleet at this point. While over the years, we've had predominantly Microsoft equipment, and we've invested over time in many systems that manage our Microsoft computers, we don't have a specific system at the moment that allows us to manage and control our Chromebook fleet, and in fact, one of our technicians, Chris Makely, often spends a good deal of his day having to go from building to building simply to manage the Chromebooks. So we had looked into several different management softwares that would allow us to do much with the Chromebooks, with what we do with our PCs at this point as far as managing. Archiving and backup services, critical. Archiving, I know that this has been an issue in past years. This is again to renew our ability to continue to archive emails and files within the systems and backup services. We currently support an onsite backup. We'd like to continue doing that going forward next year, but also support an off-site backup. That way, if there was any ever critical issue here at the high school where our network hub is contained, our files, our student records, all of our digital systems wouldn't be lost. They'd be stored in an off-site secure location where we could restore them either to another point in the district or to an off-site location if that emergency ever did come up. Website services, our website and other related services to that. We included a small bandwidth increase for this year, and I know that this has been a discussion over the years. I know when I sat on the technology committee and Mr. Syack sat there as well, we've increased bandwidth over time in chunks. With what we're looking to do going forward with many of these services, they're cloud-based services. Cloud-based services allow us to have that anytime, anywhere access for all of our staff and students and our parents without having to have those actual programs housed onsite within the high school and managed exclusively by our team. So when email goes down on a three-day weekend or even on a Sunday night, instead of having one network administrator within our district that we have to call, hope he's available, hope he can get into the system, perhaps if he has to get into the high school, we have to involve maintenance and get them to open up a building, you'd have a team of Microsoft or Google engineers that are automatically being able to maintain the system without any additional work from within the district. But having all of those systems housed off-site does require us to traffic that information back and forth, so with that, a bandwidth increase within the district is certainly called for. Although we're not currently maxing out our bandwidth as it is, the more and more systems that we bring on that are housed outside will certainly need that. Software support licenses and services, these would be our licenses that are not curriculally based. Desktop as a Service is a new technology that we were looking at for this year and decided that we were going to push this into next year. Dr. Labby actually had this in his previous district. The basic concept of desktop as a Service, we're going to look at this for a small group going into next year, 50 users, it's the smallest group that we could go with. Basically, as it is right now, every five to eight years, we have to replace our infrastructure technology. Our computers become outdated, they need to be replaced in order to provide the curricular needs and business needs that we have in the district. Desktop as a Service takes that Microsoft operating system and all of the other components, and instead of putting them on the individual machine, puts it on a network resource. That resource allows an end user, a teacher, a staff member, a student, to log into the system from pretty much any device, computer, Chromebook, phone, iPad, and bring that entire desktop environment and all your access along with it down to that device. What this also allows us to do is extend our existing hardware for at least double the time that we currently utilize it, because the resources, the memory and processor capacity, are not being utilized on the individual machine, they're being utilized on the network resource. And thanks to the work that the board has allowed and that Sandy has done over the last 10 or so years, our network infrastructure within the district is very robust. This will allow us to leverage our network instead of leveraging the end-user computer and still get the same, if not better, performance. Hardware warranties are simply to maintain warranties on existing hardware that we have within the district. Our supplies account, administrative and technology supplies, these are general accounts, hard drives, somebody's laptop breaks and iPad breaks, general supplies that are needed throughout the course of the year. Building wiring supplies within this slover school to allow us to bring some of those offices online going forward into next year. And the high school, Mr. Brown and his team had asked for several smaller labs to be installed in a variety of classrooms within the A and B wing, and this would allow us to wire for those machines. Better testing equipment was again something that we took from Dr. Labby's previous district. It's a very small line item within this. The board, when you look at the budget in its entirety, this is about $2,000. The basic concept here was that in the middle of the year, something comes up that we haven't planned on, a new technology, a new curricular product, we would have that resource allocated so that we could purchase that and move the district forward, and if nothing came up, that is certainly money that Mr. DeAndrea and Dr. Labby could repurpose for other reasonings. Network supplies, laptop batteries and docking stations. Our network supplies in this case, our wiring and cabling that we need to support our network infrastructure. Laptop batteries, several of the technicians within the district had expressed that our laptops, which have been here for quite a few years at this point, Sandy, about four years, many of their batteries are no longer maintaining a charge. So while we do have this mobile technology that's available to staff and students, we're often faced at this point where we're having to plug it in, and it becomes non-mobile technology. Replacing the batteries is a very small cost compared to replacing the laptop. And docking stations goes to a long-term plan of the technology department and the central office administration to move towards mobile devices for staff, students, and teachers across the board. This first wave of docking stations would be to put into the administrative, the principals and supervisors that do not currently have docking stations, so that they could dock their laptops instead of having a laptop and a desktop computer, which is our current model. They would just have the laptop, which they'd be able to dock and use as a desktop when they needed to, or remove and use as a laptop when they needed to. Our technology licenses and software account is predominantly our curricular software licenses. Within that, we have a large scope of software components. Dr. Shetty Ak can speak more to those. We also looked at a park assessment software for next year and our curricular support software. This would be something such as, we have a tool that allows us to create all of our student accounts at the beginning of the year. 6,000 some students, if that was done manually by hand, that would take quite some time, so our curricular support softwares are also built into that. The general supplies and technology account are our building level supplies, and much of this account was proposed by our principals and supervisors. Within here are building and classroom supplies. This line item, which is about $20 per student, was previously spread out across the buildings. With the help of Dr. Labby and Amidio, we are centralizing this back into the technology department so that when there is a large need to be purchased of supplies, be it projector bulbs, mice, keyboards, the principals who have many other things on their plate already don't have to be involved in, well, what keyboard do I buy? What mouse do I buy? Which often they have to ask the technology department anyway. They can simply say, "I need these mice," or "I need these keyboards," and it can be purchased. So that's not an increase, that's a transfer. Chromebook and iPad repair supplies, throughout the course of this year, we've had a number of Chromebooks and iPads break just from regular wear and tear use. Again, Chris Makely, one of our technicians, has been adept at learning how to repair these devices on the fly, and including these repair supplies allows us to repair at a fraction of the cost over replacing. The upper elementary school requested a number of document cameras to be added to their building. Interactive projectors is a new technology for the district, and basically, right now, for interactive whiteboards in the classroom, we've used smart boards, and we've used those for the last number of years. The interactive projector builds that smart technology into the projector itself and allows you to project interactively onto any flat white surface. Same features and abilities as the smart boards, but at about 50% of the cost at the time you account for the smart board and for the mounting of the smart boards. So this is a feature that will allow us to continue providing smart technologies within our classrooms, but at a much reduced cost over what we have in the district, and very little training difference for the teachers. iOS and Android app purchases support our current fleet of Apple and Android tablets. Replacement projectors and monitors are simply to replace breaking and aging fleets with our projectors. This year, we went through about 20, about 20 projectors that just simply broke wear and tear use, and monitors. For the last number of years, we've been utilizing the leftover big old CRT monitors that have been around the district whenever a monitor breaks. However, at this point, we've pretty much depleted that supply, so we're asking for about 25 monitors within the next year's budget so that we can simply replace what breaks throughout the course of the year. There is a request for Chromebooks and Chromebook carts within the buildings. Right now, in the larger buildings, the middle school, the high school, and the UES, we're looking for two carts worth of Chromebooks, and in the smaller buildings, we're looking for one additional in each building. Teacher laptops.
Eric, I have a question.
Sure.
Where are we with Chromebooks right now, as far as the percentage of what we have, what we need?
I can't tell you that exactly, actually.
That's why I asked.
Right now, with Chromebooks, district Right now with Chromebooks, district-wide, we're at about 2,700, a little less than 2,700 Chromebooks district-wide.
What's our goal?
Our goal completely would be at about a two-to-one ratio of devices throughout the district, which would not just be our Chromebooks, which would be all of our devices. We're at about that level right now, we're just short of that two-to-one-
You need about 300, you need about 300 more maybe.
About 300 more and I want to say that that was almost exactly the number we're looking at, total carts, about 350, I believe, was the request.
I also heard the term a while back when we were having the technology district committees about a smart board in every classroom. Where are we on that goal?
Smart boards right now, we are at about 245 total smart boards within the district and classrooms, I would say, Amideo, I don't know if you have a better number on this, I'd say we have about 400 classrooms total in the district. Give or take about 400 classrooms total in the district.
Do the Chromebooks interface with the smart boards at all?
Currently, no. However, that technology has been talked about for a number of years, one of the nice things about the interactive projectors is the Chromebooks will interface with those.
Yeah, but you lose some capability over a smart board and a projector though.
The interactive projector and at the moment, Dennis' people are installing Sample One in Truman School, so when it's installed, I would encourage with Dr. Labby's support, any of you that want to come after school one day and look at it. Basically, it is going to give the full capabilities of a smart board.
Really? And at what price comparable to a smart board?
The smart board itself is about, individual smart board, a little less than $2,000 last year and mounting it was about a little over $1,000, about $1,200 for mounting it.
What's that? How much to mount it?
About $1,000 to mount a smart board, a little more than $1,000.
Are you talking about with the technology and electricity or are you talking about just putting it on the wall?
Putting it on the wall and putting the projector in the ceiling.
A thousand dollars? We can't do that in-house?
We have not, in past times when we have tried to do this in-house-
They fell off?
The devices have basically not worked.
Really? I know you have to line them and calibrate them and everything.
It's a complex process to install all of the wiring components for both the board and the projector together.
And that's not something that comes with the purchase of the board, as far as that? That's additional?
One of the nice things about the interactive projector, everything, all the wiring, all of it is included in the single purchase price, which is about $1,700 per device. And I was with Dennis and his people today. The mounting process, the biggest problem that we ran into today is we needed more ceiling. So instead of adding more ceiling, we're dropping the actual physical chalkboard in the classroom slightly to give the space that we need.
My concern is if we start putting interactive projectors in the classrooms, what do we do with the smart boards? Do we-
We're not looking to replace the smart boards at this point. A teacher that has a smart board in the room, our existing smart board infrastructure will stay, rooms that don't have the smart boards going towards that one-to-one, we'll get the interactive projector. We're not looking to throw out existing technology.
It's a more cost-effective way to provide some smart technology into all of our classrooms.
Sure, I agree, based on the price-
As the boards break, we would look to replace them with the interactive projectors. But we're not looking to simply dispose of our technology because something new has come along. Definitely not.
Thank you.
Teacher laptops at the middle school, this was something that Mr. Kubik had talked about. She has nearly enough laptops, she's about 30 short laptops to provide her staff with laptops instead of desktops in the building and allow the desktops to be redistributed throughout the district. So it was her request as a proposal that, as a trial going towards laptops for all staff and students, that she be allowed to pilot that for her building at only about 30 additional mobile devices for next year. The elementary principals had requested digital video cameras to allow for broadcast within their buildings to record many of the great curricular and extracurricular activities that are going on and to be able to present those on our website. TV studio equipment, as many of you know, and we saw the great video that was up here before, maintaining and supporting the TV studio with constantly changing technologies and digital video is certainly an ongoing task, it's one that Sandy has taken on with Mr. Kaiserman over the years. And lastly, within that account, a tabletop computer and projector mount goes along with what we were doing with the interactive projectors. Dr. Labby, in his second role as Director of Special Services for the moment, requested this technology as a means for our special services students to allow for essentially tabletop exercises with digital technology. And one of the nice things about these interactive projectors is they don't just have to be mounted to a wall, they can also be flipped and mounted on a table for a classroom or for a conference and allow, say, the table in front of you to be able to essentially act as an interactive workspace.
And they're particularly effective at the preschool level and at the kindergarten level where, as the smart boards are usually mounted a little too high, now the kids can sit around a table and interact with smart technology.
A second set of technology accounts, and as Mr. DeAndrea explained, these accounts to me, any item that exceeds $2,000, we have ones for instructional, ones for non-instructional. And this was one of the hardest ones for me to break out individually because last year, we ended up having expenditures in these accounts, but Amideo, through some of his expertise and financial management, broke those items across lease payments for a number of years. So while those items had zeroed out in prior years, we actually did have purchases in these accounts, they were just spread across leases. So at the moment, not knowing what our full budget plan is, and that is something that Amideo could speak more to, these numbers are in here just for particular devices. And specifically within those, in our instructional technologies, there were two items that we were looking at and these both went to equalizing the curricular offerings that we have in all of the elementary schools. Tanberg Systems exist in some of our elementary schools, but not in all of them. And TV broadcast systems, the ability to broadcast within the building, much like Arlith does, like Truman does and the high school does at the other buildings within the district. Non-instructional equipment, a couple of key items here. Replacement switches, these are the devices that allow us to communicate digital technology between buildings. We actually had a situation this year where one of them burnt out and we had a building down for an entire day when all we needed was about a 15-minute switch of a device, but we had to then wait for the device to get here. So we were looking for one additional of each of the two switches that we have in the district, or two types of switches. A network router would go hand-in-hand with the bandwidth increase, our current router is at its capacity, so if we do increase bandwidth in the district, we do also need to purchase a router that will support that increase. A network web filter is a critical option. Our web filter is expiring this year, it is required by federal mandates, we do need to have one in place for next year. And the research done by our network administrator and our chief technology officer, they found one that should hopefully help our district and our end-student resources, and I know there's some students and staff here and they can probably speak to this, of they go to a website where it's a perfectly legitimate curricular website and they get access denied because our current web filter installs a small application on the computer. Every so often, that application doesn't start, requires a technician to come out, fix it, restart it. The new web filter that we're proposing in the budget is all housed on the outside of our network, on the gateway between, and will keep that inappropriate not-access- denied from popping up within the district. And the last item there would be network wire testers, which would be a tester that allows our network administrator and technicians to test for faults, particularly with our copper and our fiber cabling, where instead of bringing in an outside company at a cross, they would be able to seek and find where breaks in our cable are within the buildings. Lease accounts, these are just existing accounts where we have lease purchases out over the years, these are just payments that are coming due for the next year. Within there, there's two specific leases, payment three and four of an infrastructure lease and payment one of three of a technology lease. Amideo would be able to tell you specifically what is in those accounts and in those leases when the board looks at the budget in detail. So I spent some time looking at these final totals with Dr. Labby and with Amideo and there was a whole lot of different numbers. And basically, what it came down to is if we factored in two concepts, the fact that last year we had lease payments go out and this year none of anything has been allocated to lease payments, and the fact that last year, building technology funds were in the buildings, if I factor those values back into the 1415 and 1314 school years and then look at our comparison to 1516, we're looking at the numbers that are over here, where over last year's budget, we're looking at about $133,000 increase and over the 1314, we're looking at about an $85,000 increase. These numbers represent a significant increase in technology, both software and hardware within the district to support and enhance our curricular and our business processes. If you look at the raw numbers, budget to budget, and you don't take into account the fact that there were lease payments that went out last year, or that some of the funds that are now in technology belonged in other parts of the budget, the numbers are larger. But then, when you look at the entire budget in its entirety, these values were elsewhere in the budget, they're simply now in the technology, so over the next couple of years, these numbers would normalize. The last thing I'd like to talk about tonight, which is not included in the budget, but Dr. Labby had asked me to include it, and Sandy has done quite a significant amount of research into phone systems, as many as you know, last year, in about the springtime, the high school phone system was going out on pretty much a weekly basis for about a month, over a month. And as Ms. Marr will attest to her building, her phone system still goes out on a fairly monthly basis. The easy answer to that is that our existing phone system, while viable in many of our buildings, is anywhere from about 10 to 25 years old, depending on which building you're in. And while we don't think of phones as this great extravagant technology, when a parent can't call into a building, or a teacher or nurse or an administrator with an emergency can't call out of a building, it becomes a critical issue. The items on this represent two different forms of potentially upgrading our phone systems district-wide going forward. The first two companies that we had looked at, LightPath and Xtel, provide a hosted solution. And basically, the benefits of a hosted solution are that the brains of the phone system are no longer housed in the district or are essentially no longer owned by the district, which means the maintenance and upkeep of the system is not the responsibility of the district. And as technology increases over time, we're not responsible for buying new phone technology and taking away from curricular technology. What comes with that is obviously a monthly cost. That monthly cost, broken out over time, includes both the actual service as well as the phones that would be available to the district because it would require the replacement of the phones. There are a variety of different options, either to purchase the phones upfront or lease them over time. The bottom options there all represent purchasing phone systems to house within the district, maintaining them. Two of the options here, Johnson Technology and Adellex, are basically offering at about $250-some thousand to replace what we have now with the new version of what we have now. The other two companies, Promedia and Presidio, and this number for Presidio right here was a rough estimate of, for the high school only, they did just come in with a number today for the district, which came to about $376,000. Represents more than a phone system, represents what's known as a unified communication system, which includes a variety of additional features beyond simple phone, like the ability for a teacher to forward phone numbers to another device, or an administrator that moves between buildings to have one number that to carry. A lot of luxury features that certainly are nice, but are not necessarily required. The downside to having an on-premise system is that in five to 10 years, we'll be looking at replacing the system again, or currently, you know, we have gone 15 to 25, but the average life expectancy of a phone system is about five to 10 years at this point. The upside to an on-premise system is obviously it's a one-time cost with no reoccurring monthly fees. So this is not included in the budget proposal, but it is included as an addendum for the board to consider going forward. Our current phone system is not going to get any younger. Right now, there is no such thing as a new part for our phone system. We have been very fortunate with Amideo and what the borough has helped to find a phone company right now that's willing to work with our existing phone systems and find refurbished and used parts. When something breaks, they have so far been able to maintain it. But at some point in the future, I can't tell you exactly when in the future, those components will become either cost prohibitive or nonexistent. So at some point, we do have to look at considering an upgrade to our phone system. And given the critical nature of making a 911 call or an emergency call, it's something that the Technology Department would recommend looking at sooner than later.
First, I got a couple of questions. On the phone system, which one of these would you recommend?
The, when Sandy and I and several of our technology staff members looked at this, we found that the hosted system was probably the most viable for the district, although the cost of monthly payments was not something that was terribly appealing, the fact that we would never have to look at purchasing another phone system or be in the position where we have down-filled systems going forward. So with that, Xtel and LightPath would be our two viable offerings. LightPath currently is our provider for internet and data and our voice services as far as the actual phone bill. That makes them a very appealing product. However, the downside to that is our internet, our data and our voice would all be housed by one carrier, so if something globally happened to LightPath's network in the area, we lose everything simultaneously. That's where Xtel, having an offering of their own independent system, had some advantages as well. Xtel actually called today and said that if the board was looking to make a move on this and the district was looking to make a move, they were willing to offer two deals, which basically, as E-rate funding decreases for voice over the next five years, they would decrease the monthly cost 20% each year to match that E-rate decrease. And they would also be willing to look at, if there was an agreement for next year, they would be willing to look at installing the system and getting the hosted system up online for this year at no cost to the district from March to June. I can't speak to the specifics of communication billing, that falls under Amideo's budget, but a hosted system of one form or another would be the recommendation of the Technology Department. And really, we'd look at the pros and cons of having one service for everything versus a separate service for our voice to create some level of redundancy so that if a network hub went down in the general area, we don't lose everything at once.
Okay. I mean, the only concern that I'm seeing with that is the cost. If you're telling me we've got an average lifespan of about 10 years on a phone system, at even $60,000 a month, you're talking 72 grand a year, $720,000 over 10 years-
Yes.
-versus even the most expensive one on here is $431.
Absolutely. And that's the trade-off. You're getting the redundancy, you're getting the uptime, you're getting the constant increase of technology with the hosted system. You're also getting the guaranteed maintenance plans that come with it. If you purchase a system, and certainly nothing wrong with that, there is just a point where the board will be faced in five, 10 years with purchasing another one. Cost, you will save money with the on-premise system, there's no doubt about that. You will save maintenance and upgrade over time with the hosted systems. You will always have the latest technology. And really, the hosted systems should be compared with what Promedia and Presidio offer because basically, they're looking to offer the same suite of services where what Johnson and Adellex were looking to offer is your basic phone system. Basically, what you have, just a current version of it that has parts and maintenance capabilities.
Okay. And my second question was, I know earlier in the year, we had an issue with our network infrastructure where it went down and I got a call from Mr. DeAndrea saying, "We don't think we're going to be able to make payroll." And I came back to him and said, "Well, then go to the bank and get some starter checks and you and I got a lot of checks to write out manually." That's the piece from the technology standpoint that keeps me up at night. From this budgetary standpoint, how good are you feeling with regard to our redundancy, the fact that we're going to have network uptime, and the fact that our critical systems, payroll, student data, grading, are sufficiently backed up, redundant, archived- payroll, student data, grading, are sufficiently backed up, redundant, archived, and that I'm not going to get it, or actually, it would be you, Mr. McEnone, but Mr. McEnone is not going to get another phone call like that?
Right now, Mr. Saack, I wouldn't be comfortable with it. What we have currently, in this very day, if something happens to this building, if we had a catastrophic disaster in this building, a large percentage, if not all, of our digital data could be lost. Much of what we proposed here with backup systems, archiving systems, and cloud-based technology would allow for that redundancy and uptime if anything happened to any building in the district. Desktop as a service, just as an example, we could take down this entire network tomorrow. If we had desktop as a service for everyone, take out your cellphones, take out your iPads, log into your desktops, because they're not housed in the district anymore, they're housed in the cloud. This is a model that much of the business world is going to. Many other schools are looking at cloud-based technologies. Sandy, over the years, has been moving in this direction with a lot of other technologies. This is just a continuation of a long-term plan. Having the backup, redundancy, off-site and on-site, and cloud technologies gives us that ability, so that when something critical happens, we're not dependent on a small technology staff, single point of architecture, that allows when something does go down, it could be hours or days for us to restore something. And if we had another disaster, like the hurricane a couple of years ago, if something had happened to this building, your power school data, your budget, your payroll, while we're creating backups, we're creating them on-site. So if something happened to this building, your backups are gone with your primaries. So much of what is in this budget speaks to that question that you're asking, comfort with redundancy and backups and security of our data, that's what we're looking to move towards.
So we'll be in that position by the end of next school year then, assuming the board appropriates funding for everything that you specified?
With the board's support, many of these items do speak to that. Certainly, many of the items speak to our curricular process as well, so it's not exclusive. But yes, that would be true.
Because what you've told me just has me now even more concerned, but at least I feel that we have a plan, which is good. And I think strategically, as a board, you know, we need to make sure that we fund the infrastructure piece to ensure that that happens.
I would say that many of the cloud technologies that we're looking here with Google and Microsoft and some of the other companies actually have come a long way in the last couple of years. I know that in prior Technology Committee meetings with Sandy and yourself, we had talked about disaster recovery, and the cost was prohibitive.
Yeah.
It truly was. With the advances in cloud technology, that cost isn't prohibitive anymore, it's just a matter of shifting our technologies, some of which we're already moving on. With the Google platform we have in place, and with the Microsoft equivalent, Office 365, with what we have already, we're already moving there. I know that Mike Ronowitz has been working for the last couple weeks at this point with Microsoft and with Google to, A, get archiving in place, and B, get our email system in the cloud without any additional cost to the board or to the district.
And to Mr. McEnone's questions, I got to say, I'm impressed. You know your numbers, and you know them well. I'm very impressed. Any other board questions?
I have a quick question. On the phone system, on the purchase side, wouldn't we have to buy some sort of maintenance plans, or like what happens when something breaks?
Yes. Right now, the maintenance plan that we have with the existing phone company, which right now is Adellex, is about $30,000 a year.
$30,000 a year.
And that would maintain the same year-to-year.
But if we went to one of the hosted systems with that maintenance agreement, $30,000 go away?
It would get absorbed into these costs. You wouldn't be losing the total funding, because you do have a monthly cost there, but you wouldn't need the separate maintenance agreement, no.
Any other board member questions? If not a very detailed briefing, thank you. Next.
Dr. Shiriak needs no introduction.
Hi. I'm here tonight to talk about the budget for curriculum instruction. I'll include a little bit about assessment and professional development. This budget was designed collaboratively with the principals, the supervisors, central office administration, and input from teachers. Many of the items that you're going to see in this budget presentation tonight have been covered in some of the other presentations by the building principals. Okay. First, our mission statement for our Department of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. And our mission is to provide a quality education for each and every student. To that end, the district is committed to, sorry, to continual process of curriculum review and improvement. In addition, there's a strong tradition of professional development for the staff to support instruction in the classroom. And our goals, the goals will look rather familiar, because taking a systems approach, the goals for curriculum and instruction are directly related to the goals that each of the building principals has. First goal is to successfully prepare all students for college and career, to focus on student learning, that's the center of everything we do here in the district, to deliver curriculum, instruction, and assessment that works, to use technology as a tool to enhance student learning. You've certainly heard Mr. Glock-Malloy talk a great deal about all of the technology tools that we are using and that we propose to use here in the district, and to provide staff members with ongoing and sustained professional development. Okay. The first item I'm going to talk about are textbooks. Now, these were covered in each of the individual principals' presentations, but I put them all together here, so you can get an overall picture of what we are proposing for textbook purchases for next year. We are proposing some new math textbooks to align with the Common Core, particularly at the high school level with Algebra I, Algebra II, and Geometry. Okay, right now, many of the materials that we're using at that level are obsolete, they're not Common Core-aligned, and they're not aligned with the New Jersey model curriculum. Okay, they, we want to have materials that will help prepare our students for the 21st century skills. We're also proposing some new anthologies and novels for Grade 6 and 7 Language Arts Literacy, English in Grade 10, and English in Grade 11. We're looking to purchase new texts for Spanish III, French I and II, our AP Biology course, AP Chemistry, and a new course that we're planning to offer next year, AP Environmental Science, along with new AP History texts. Additionally, Ms. Jacobic had mentioned in her presentation that she's looking for additional social studies and science texts at the middle school level, because the enrollment is shifting. When we have new students who come into a particular grade level, we sometimes need to order 50 or 60 new texts. And then, replacement of texts at all levels. Okay. Curriculum, purchase service, services and supplies. Now, Mr. Glock-Malloy covered most of this in his presentation. These items include the curriculum and evaluation software that we're looking at. Currently, we use TeachScape, and we are looking to possibly replace that with something else that will also include the ability to integrate the curriculum in it, and teachers can use it for lesson planning. For our online courses, currently, we use Apex at the high school, and we are looking to continue that. The, in these line items, we have outside presenters for Staff Development Day, and finally, curriculum supplies, which include things such as Scantron CPR replies, supplies, and office supplies. Okay, curriculum writing. We began last year a large initiative of revising our curriculum. We are using a slightly, a different format, beginning with the end in mind, and we are looking to continue that process. Okay, we have some new courses that we are planning to offer next year, so we will need to write curriculum for that. We are looking to, for next year, rewrite the curriculum for science courses in Grades 6 through 12, because the next-generation science standards are going to be implemented, and our curriculum must align with them by September of 2016. Okay, we're looking to revise the elementary health curriculum, the social studies in Grades 3 through 5, 12th grade English, this year we're working on 10th and 11th grade English, and Language Arts Literacy in Grades K through 5, as well as our technology courses. Okay, professional development. This line item includes Staff Development Day presenters, out-of-district workshops and conferences. Our teachers attend up to two out-of-district workshops each year. This includes additional funds for professional development focused on readers and writers' workshop, and ongoing sustained in-district professional development. Okay, our Talented and Gifted Program. This program is funded separately from the individual school accounts. Okay, and these items allow for supplies and books for the Talented and Gifted Program. We have begun a real emphasis on STEM. This line item of professional services includes the cost for PSAT assessments for all Grades 10 and 11 students. This was the first year that we administered this assessment in the school in October to all students. In the past, students took it on their own, they paid for it on their own, and they took it on a Saturday. In order to increase our students' opportunity for national merit scholarships, and to provide them with more of a background and prepare them better for the SATs, we decided to fund this, and we would like to continue with that project. Also included in this amount are district assessments, including access for ELLs and AP exam fees for all students enrolled in advanced placement courses. Okay, this is something that we just discussed with the Student Achievement Committee this evening, and what we are proposing is that all students who are enrolled in an advanced placement course will be required to take the exam, and the district would pay for that. Okay. Within the Guidance Department budget, there's small line item for rentals, which is basically their mailing a postage machine. Okay, some of the supplies within the Guidance Department include office supplies, postage, some materials for the middle school. The Guidance Department runs, at the high school on Saturdays, a life strategies counseling program in conjunction with the Saturday suspension program. This is INRS materials and supplies for AP night, which AP night is next Wednesday night. Okay, some other objects within the Guidance Department, the course description book, the counselor training for webinars, reference books for the students with, housed within the Guidance Department, AP exam reimbursement. Right now, although we do not require this year students to take the AP exam if they're in an AP course, we do reimburse them if they receive a score of a four or a five. Naviance, which is a program that the Guidance Department uses, it's a wonderful program. Again, some more for the Saturday Life Strategies Program, and the score reports that we receive for the SAT and ACT tests. Now, included information here, because although this is not, these following sections are not funded directly by the district, the funds we receive from the federal government offset so much of what we do within curriculum and instruction. Okay, Title I funds, they provide funds for school districts with high numbers or high percentages of children from low-income families to help level the playing field for those students. Currently, this year, we received Title I funds for four of our schools. We received them for Wilson, Arlett, Samstol, and the middle school. Title II-A is designed to increase the academic achievement of students by helping the schools and the districts provide professional development for teachers and for principals. They also provide funds for class size reduction. And Title III is used to provide programs for students who are not proficient in English, okay, for the English language learners. And just to give you a quick idea of the kinds of things that we spend the Title I funds on, and the amount that we spend, I included here the figures for 2013, 14, and the current year's budget. Okay, under instructional salaries, where we spend almost 500, where we receive almost $500,000, we fund Title I teachers at the four schools. We also pay for some tutorial programs for students at those schools. Instructional supplies, these are just for the students who are in the Title I program, but they're designed to supplement what we, as a district, supply. Supports salaries are when the teachers do something extra that's not directly related to the students. Sometimes, they look at data, they prepare reports, and they work over the summer. A portion of the teachers' benefits are included in this. And some purchase services, and some additional non-instructional supplies and materials. Title II-A, the first line item, instructional salaries, that is the salary for a class-size-reduction teacher. It's a teacher that was hired, a position that was created several years ago at Eisenhower School to reduce the size of the classes there. And we are able to fund that through this grant. Okay, support services, those are professional development providers. Any of the teachers who are here who have attended the writers' workshop programs when we brought a presenter in, that's part of that line item. Again, benefits, part of the workshop costs for teachers is included here, and some professional development materials. Appletrap, that we use to process applications for employees, that is part of this grant also. Title III, this again is for our English language learners. We provide tutorial programs for the students, supplemental supplies. We, this year, we purchased Rosetta Stone for the students to use, not only in school, but that they could also use it at home.
Any questions from the board?
Does anyone have any questions?
Just one question, and I asked it of Mr. Brown. The new math series and the calculators that we're purchasing, can you just give us some background as to what the strategy is there?
Okay. With the math series, as I said, some of the materials that we have at the high school level in particular are outdated, they're not aligned with the Common Core and the state's model curriculum, so we are looking to replace that for Algebra I, Algebra II, geometry, and also with the, we're proposing a change in the sequence of math courses at the middle school level, so there would be some shifting enrollment there. And as far as the calculators, Dr. Trevisono has proposed having class sets of calculators in all of the math classes here at the high school. Okay?
Any other questions?
I have a question. With reference to the math series?
Yes.
You said our current texts are not aligned with the Common Core?
Correct.
So what would happen if...
So what would happen if we couldn't buy these textbooks this year? What would that mean to us?
Well, the texts themselves are not aligned with the Common Core. The curriculum is. So we put together things and we move things around.
So what do we do now? We don't use the texts we have?
We use the texts, but it's not very easy to use the text, the current text.
How long has this not been aligned with the Common Core, these textbooks?
Probably about two years.
Any questions?
This is probably more theoretical, but just because I heard Eric's technology before this. Obviously, the textbooks are necessary, but I was just wondering, as we increase the number of Chromebooks, do we envision any time where we're getting texts just strictly online and then updating from that point? Is that a feasibility at any time?
Yes, it certainly is, and many of the new texts that we are purchasing are both online and a regular text. So what we often do is we purchase a class set of the texts, and then we have extras if students need the regular text to take home, but many of them just use the online version at home.
Okay, great, thanks.
So we are transitioning to that.
But you gotta be careful, because the textbook companies are aware that they'll try to do that.
Sure.
And basically, they'll charge you the same amount for the software program as the actual text. Or you can buy the textbooks and get the software program with it. You can't just get a couple of hard textbooks and then get the rest. They're savvy and they won't let you do that.
Okay.
Right, and in most cases, that's what we're doing. I know our science textbooks at the middle school, we have the textbooks, but we have the online component. And the online component, the beauty of that is that they update it often, even though, you know, the hard text may not be updated.
On that same point, when I spoke to the AP history classes for Back to School for Legislators Day, I asked them about that. I said, "Look, what if we went online?" Because they were complaining about the AP history book, and I was complaining about the cost of a new set of AP history books. And I said, "Look, what if we went online?" To my surprise, they actually preferred the book. And I was shocked at that when they told me, but the universal, again, it was only two classes. We've got 6,000 students, that was about 40 students. But the feedback that I got from our AP kids was they actually prefer the hard textbook. And I was surprised at that.
Yeah, surprised.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you. As far as the minutes are concerned, anybody have any questions or concerns about the minutes from the January 20 meeting? Seeing none, I'll accept the motion to file an acceptance, need a second?
Second.
Roll call voted, please.
I apologize.
Second for Ms. Blume.
Mr. Ball.
Yes.
Mrs. Back.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Brzezinski.
Yes.
Mr. Sian.
Yes.
Mrs. Stratt.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Tyra, I should have gotten you for the presentations, but student council representative.
I wrote it on my phone.
Can you show it right off?
Yeah, I'm gonna. All right, Fall Pepper Rally was a success. We did our usual things, which is like naming the sports teams and having our cheerleaders perform. We did the ice bucket challenge for Mr. Brown, and we had two students pour like the bucket on him. It was like a senior and a freshman. The students like really enjoyed that. As a school, we were really upset over the football season being taken away. Lots of our students felt like it's not cerebral without our football, but we're very grateful to have it back, a lot of the students were saying. We had our winter pepper rally for the first time. It went along like the same way like all of our other pepper rallies, but like it was in the gym. It was a little crowded, but it worked. We introduced winter sports. We had our cheerleader perform again, and instead of a tug-of-war challenge, we had a three-point challenge. So like, they were like at the three-point line and they shot the basketball. It was like against teachers and like students, so that was pretty cool. We also threw free t-shirts away, like saying bombers are back to show that like we're coming back as a stronger community. Lastly, we're also trying to prepare a spring pepper rally, but there's still like no definite plans on that. We're not sure like if we're gonna get that. Student Council is also trying to get like money to raise up to get a mascot of some sort, like for like our sporting events, which is gonna be pretty cool to liven up the crowd for all our sporting events. But we don't have the money right now.
Thank you for the update.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You don't have to stick around.
Did I talk fast?
Dr. Labby?
Thank you very much, Ms. McEnroe. Before I get to my report, I just want a budget calendar review here. As you can see, as of this evening, we did provide a preliminary budget to our Board of Education. In fact, Mr. DeAndrea distributed that today. And of course, we had two great presentations on curriculum and instruction and technology. Upcoming presentations on February 17th. Debbie Shadlock, our coordinator of transportation, will provide a presentation on her proposed budget. And I will give a presentation on the special education proposed budget. Andrea, can you shift? Moving along to the superintendent's report. Board of Education members, if you look at items two and three on page two, we have approval of allowance deductions. One for $15,000 for the Arlett School mechanical upgrades, and another one for $10,000 for the district security upgrades. Item number five, we have approval of several several middle school winter guard competitions. That basically is the transportation cost to take them to those competitions. That can be found on page two as well. On page three, number six, approval of several other student trips with transportation costs included. Item number seven on page four, approval of an out-of-district tuition contract for a student with a disability. And on the addendum, we're asking Board of Education members to approve a purchase professional services contract with a clinically licensed social worker to provide cognitive behavioral therapy for one or more of our students. Any questions on Vision 2030 Finance and Infrastructure? Okay. Moving along to student achievement, we only have one item that can be found on page four. It's the revision of the 2014-15, that's this year's calendar, to include now February 13th as a regular session student school day in order to make up the school day we lost last week. If you look at the calendar here, you can see that in, previously, the 13th was a vacation day. We now had to make that a full student day. The language on the calendar clearly indicated that the first day we would take, if we had a school closing, would be February 13th. The next day on this calendar that it indicates we'll take is actually April 22nd. So if we were to close school for another day, the next day we would take would be that. Beyond that, we would take either from our spring break, or we would take from the end of the school year. But, you know, looking at the forecasts that we've been having, in fact, I think they're predicting snow again Sunday into Monday. We gotta be real careful about getting our 180 days in prior to June 30th. Oh, I'm sorry, I meant May 22nd.
Thank you, Mr. DeAndrea.
A lot of people are looking.
Some people question why, Mr. DeAndrea, this is why Mr. DeAndrea is here. So I'm sorry, yes, the next day we would take would be on May 22nd. And then beyond that, like I said, end of the school year, and then of course, spring break. Any questions on student achievement? Vision 2030 Personnel, numbers one and two, acceptance of some resignations? I would like to say, and I will speak some words about Mrs. Kravik's at our next Board of Education meeting. We are very, very sorry to see Michelle Kravik's go, but we're happy for her. She's been an incredible asset to our district, particularly all of our preschool-aged children. Number three, on page five, the receiptment of an employment contract. Number four, on page five, we have several leaves of absence. Numbers five and six on page five, we have the transfers of two cafeteria workers, as well as a grounds worker going to a day custodian position. Number seven on page six, approval of two coaching aides. Number nine on page six, approval of a replacement English teacher, and that is a long-term substitute for pull-out resource center, and that's at the high school. Numbers 10 and 11, approval of non-certified and certified substitutes, and that can be found on page seven. We also have some curriculum writers that we would like you to approve. You can find that on page seven as well, and that's item 12. And finally, item number 13, this is the annual statement of assurance that we have to provide to the Department of Education stating that all the paraprofessionals that we employ are for reasons related to a child's individualized education program or the fact that we need to meet mandated program sizes within the New Jersey Administrative Code for our students with disabilities. Any questions at all on Vision 2030 Personnel or any of the superintendent's report?
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no board questions, I'll open up for the public for agenda items only. I will open up for the public again for any business that may be able to come before this board. At this time, anybody from the public have any questions on the agenda items? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public portion and entertain a motion to the board to accept and file the superintendent's report.
So move.
And I'll take a second.
Second.
And I'll have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Ball.
Yes.
Mrs. Back.
Yes.
Mrs. Blume.
Yes.
Mr. Brzezinski.
Yes.
Mr. Sian.
Yes.
Mrs. Stratt.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
And Mr. Rain.
Yes. On the superintendent, on the, excuse me, on the Finance and Infrastructure, Mr. Ball, do you have anything to update us on?
No, we're meeting next Tuesday. We're gonna look at the budget. Looks like we have a $3 million over cap issue to look at right now.
$3 million, right?
Yeah, so we have a little work to do, but we'll be there.
No doubt in my mind, sir. I look forward to how you resolve that problem. Our student achievement, I think we had one of the most productive meetings in some time, and Mrs. Backo, as the committee chair, is gonna give us a little synopsis of what we talked about.
Okay, as Mrs. Shettyak indicated, we discussed the AP exam reimbursement, and we're going to make a change. Instead of reimbursing for four and five scores, we are now going to pay for the course upfront and require the students to take the test if they take the class. We understand that some students may not feel they're prepared at the end, so what the change we would like to make is if the student enrolls in the AP class and then decides not to take the test at the end, they will not receive the AP credit for it. They will receive honors credit instead. So this, it was about $25,000, I think we budgeted for, so the exams will be paid for upfront. Is there any, I'm gonna ask if there's any questions on that from the board before I move forward. If there's any concerns?
Everybody said, the rationale is that when we, a while back, if you remember, we had some students come back and we interviewed some AP students and asked them why they didn't take other AP, and they said the costs of the tests were prohibitive. You're taking five AP classes, you're looking at almost $500 in tests. So I think to incentivize those kids to take the AP exams, that we will pay the cost of those. And I think that's a move in the right direction.
And it also, we received a low score on our student performance report last year because not enough students were taking the test. So this is also a way of us to increase our scores.
Mrs. Stratt, you had a comment?
Right, well, I was thinking, why, would we lose a lot of students going into the AP course then?
No, well, that's why we said that might deter people from taking the AP course, but you could still take the course if you didn't take the test. You just wouldn't get that weighting. You would get the honors weighting instead of the AP.
Just one question on that. Do we have any data from any outside organization about whether or not that? Do we have any data that says that doing this supports the board's goals of what we're trying to accomplish? Because I know we're trying to get more kids to obviously attain college credit on the AP exam so that they can, you know, carry that credit forward. And you also indicated about the performance issue on the performance rewards. Have we got any data that says that this is the correct model?
I think if you look at the different districts, you look at, you see different models. I think what we're trying to do is, you know, we're raising the bar in all other areas curriculum-wise. We implemented a new AP course availability in AP Environmental Science. And rankings of districts, and what the College Board looks at is, number one, a district, how many AP courses a district offers.
Right.
And then what percentage of the students that are enrolled actually take the AP exam? All those things matter when colleges are selecting kids coming from certain schools. And that's always been the main drive and focus behind this. And if you look what this committee, curriculum committee has done over the last 10 years, you know, raising the bar as far as number of credits to take to graduate, number of AP offerings, Apex online courses for those students that want to take classes that we don't offer because of enrollment numbers and those types of things. And what Ms. Backo is also gonna talk about, as far as how we're re aligning the math curriculum and what we're gonna start teaching in the middle school as well, all falls into that big picture.
But the one thing I just want to stress, we had discussed this AP exam requirement. We've discussed it for quite a few years. We went back and forth with it. We did a survey with the teachers. At this particular time, it now has come to us as a recommendation from the administration. So this is something we had discussed, but now at this time, the administration wants to move forward on it.
Yeah, and that was one of the reasons I was asking the question, because I know that initially it wasn't supported, now it is supported. I was wondering if, you know, there was any data that backs it up, that this is the right way to get the goal that we want.
I think the student performance report is one of the things that's driving it.
Okay.
Good questions.
And, you know, it's, we'll try it if it doesn't work.
Yeah, we certainly alter it after we try it for you.
And, you know, we won't know how our numbers work out until after we try it, so.
Right, and it may take a year or two to really get a good feel around it.
Okay, the other thing we did talk about was the change in the math curriculum, which is the new textbooks and the calculators. And part of that is something also that had been ongoing, where we were trying to push more algebra down into the middle school. And so they're, it's going to start at the sixth grade to realign so that by the time, more and more students, and then it will travel up through to the high school so that by the time students reach the 12th grade, the high, the high, the ones that are honor students now should be able to even get in another math course. They should probably finish calculus by 11th grade instead of 12th grade. And then you'll see more students in the middle school finish Algebra I than we currently have. And Dr. Labby's goal is 85%, which we think is a very good goal.
Me too.
We also talked about putting Rosetta Stone in for Spanish for K through two, and having a push-in for Spanish for grades three and four. And that's looking for the September 15 school year.
Yeah, including that is push-in for grade five, too.
And grade five, too. And one other thing that came up last year that we had discussed were some, actually, I think this might have come up at an ed council meeting, where some of the teachers were saying that keyboarding needed to be moved down. So we're looking at a computer class to be held as a special in the elementary schools for the next school year as well.
Anything you want to add to that, Dr. Labby? I know that was one of your initiatives.
Beginning in kindergarten. I think it's really important that as early as kindergarten, you know, talking about Vision 2030, we have an opportunity to work with our children on the very basic computer skills, such as keyboarding, dragging and dropping, using a mouse, and so forth. So we're real excited about that.
And the one thing that we just touched on, but we need more information. Dr. Labby is going to try to crunch some numbers for us to see about implementing block scheduling in the high school. That's something that we've been talking about for quite some time as well. So we're gonna look to see if it's financially feasible, something that we can do.
That's great news.
Good to be talking about.
Absolutely.
And we did also talk about the PARC test and about students who do not wish to take the test. So I recommend everyone to attend the February 10th meeting at the high school at 7 o'clock.
And we'll go ahead and advertise that with a blast, put it on the website. Is it on there?
It's already been advertised, we're gonna advertise again, though.
Yes, it went out last week, but we're going to send out another.
It's a week away, so.
Yes.
I'll be at the high school auditorium.
Any questions?
Time is flying. Time is flying.
Not for this meeting.
I won't leave any names with that, Mr. Glockner Lloyd.
I know, everything I want to know about technology, which is good. That's why we invited you. Vision 2030 Personnel, John, you got any?
There's no report at this time.
Very good. Any comments, any questions? If not, I'll accept the.
I have one more.
Yes.
I just came back from Washington DC for National School Boards. I attended their advocacy institute. We met with Cory Booker, Senator Booker's staff, as well as the senators stopped by as well. One of the things that we worked with him on, and we're getting him additional data, is he seems very engaged in trying to increase the amount of IDEA funding from the federal government, which would help offset our special education costs. So we're working with him on getting that information. The other piece of good news is I went before the National School Boards Association Nominating Committee, which is a committee composed of three members from each of the five regions of the country, the Northeast, the Central, the Southern, the Western, and the Pacific. And they have selected me as their 2015 Secretary Treasurer for the National School Boards Association. Now, that means there's more.
Has that helped us?
I'm getting there, Mr. McEnroe. Because I knew you would ask that question.
Just checking.
Because when I became president of NJSBA, you asked me that question.
And you answered that one.
And I know, well, here it comes. You better hold on.
Go ahead.
Over the past 15 years, anyone who has been selected as Secretary Treasurer two years later became president of the National School Boards Association. It's, I mean, there are some milestones along the way over the next two years, but basically, it is the last major. is the last major hurdle of getting into the line of ascension to the presidency of the association. So that will hopefully, if all goes well, happen in April of 2017. That will be held in Denver, Colorado, at our national conference. The board will be invited to attend. I would hope in particular, the board president would be there, as that has been past practice. In addition to that, that September, the September meeting of the National School Boards Association Board of Directors is always held in the home state of the national president, in particular, in the home district of the national president. So we will have the board of directors here. We will have the Commissioner of Education usually here. We might have some congresspeople here. It is a great PR event. It's a chance to showcase our program, showcase our district. And on top of that, the board of directors eats lunch with our students. So Mr. Santiago will be in charge of tasting the food before the board of directors comes to make sure that it's up to, we'll bring him back, to make sure that it's, to make sure that it's up to his standards.
He might be sitting up here then.
He may be sitting up here then.
I lived in Colorado for many years, and lovely place. We'll just make sure that you're the board president in 2017, so.
Well, I would hope in 2017 that would be somebody else here so that I can do the national stuff for the year.
I vote for Ms. Backo.
But like I said, it's looking very good right now, and I just wanted to share that information.
Okay. Thank you. Congratulations. You always represented us well.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay, public participation on anything that may become before the board. If anybody has any questions, please come up, state your name and address for the record. Mr. Santiago, remember what I said last meeting, right?
I've adjusted myself accordingly. Don't worry.
Very good.
I'm ready this time. Louis Santiago, 23, Asta Court. I kind of got stumped today because I was thinking to myself, wow, I really don't have very much to talk about this week, you know? How many times does that happen?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming, David.
Wow! But actually, that lunch thing does sound pretty cool, though. Actually, by that time, I will be two years in the culinary school, hopefully, God willing. So you never know, you know? I might come back here, you know, and, you know, show you some things, you know? Maybe introduce some whole wheat pasta and, you know, whole grain things, you know? Or you never know, you could encourage Michelle Obama to change the food program. But don't worry, she'll be out of here soon enough. That's besides the point. I definitely have to say, that video that Kennedy put together was very, very, very motivational and inspirational, and shows very much so, the power that we have as students, not only to take something negative, to try to take it into a positive way and show, you know, that obviously not everybody is bad, you know? Just a couple of bad seeds isn't just going to go ruin everything, you know? It was a very, very good video, you know? I really do encourage that. My second question is, who is in charge of the social media pages for the district?
What's your question, Louis?
Facebook and Twitter.
That would be me, Mr. Glockenloy, and Mrs. Paul.
You're doing a great job. [laughing]. Yep. You're doing a great job on that. I definitely have to say, I mean, even before I got a call the other day, I was talking about how it was going to be delayed opening. I was scrolling through my feed, and I saw that. So doing a very, very good job on that. I definitely do encourage everybody to follow and, you know, like on Facebook and follow on Twitter, because those are definitely two things that are very powerful. And social media is dominating the technology agent. Definitely to get things out through that is very good. Definitely the delayed openings and everything, the timing to figure everything out was done very well and executed, and gave us plenty of time to dig ourselves out and de-ice, especially this morning. I mean, maintenance crews did a very good job. It was very messy this morning. I mean, they didn't plow or do anything for, in my neighborhood, but a very good job on that stuff. But other than that, you know, the lunch foods have been standing up pretty good. I haven't seen anything that's been that bad lately, so, you know? We're standing pretty good there. Something that I did like is when we, during the midterm exams we had this year, because we had the eight-period exams, we had a two-hour lunch period. We had lunch services and snack services offered during this time, and I definitely think that was a great idea. I talked to Ms. Jenkins about that. It was, worked out very well. And it worked very well. The only thing we suggested was to have breakfast items, being the fact that it was 10:00 in the morning, and we were serving popcorn chicken and curly fries, which looked pretty appetizing, you know?
No pizza?
No, we, actually, I don't know if we had pizza that day. I think we might have had pizza that day, but no taco meat that day. But, you know, you guys are always welcome to come down and join me for lunch, you know? I'm here every day. I don't miss a day, ever. I don't even know how I do it, but I've never missed a day, ever. So, you know, maybe we should make an award for that, you know?
Good enough.
It's an accomplishment to come here every day at 7:00 in the morning. Awesome, which leads me to the next question. We discussed how they, with the three-tier bus system, about a lot of people and the staff members actually coming up and asking me, are we definitely going to go forward with this starting earlier school plan? Or like, what would we say about that?
Again, like we said during our last meeting, it's something that the district is taking very seriously and investigating.
Okay. Also, something else I was going to ask, can't remember what it was now, but I think that's about it for me. So, you know, that was sweet and simple, hopefully. So I'll have some good stuff for next time.
Thank you, Jonathan.
All right. Thank you very much.
Anybody else from the public like to speak? Please come on up.
Hi, Charlene Juneman, Esprus Lane. I have questions on the AP issues that were brought up, so I don't know if Mrs. Backo, if you could help me out. Next year, then, if students take AP and they're required to take the test, if they don't take the test, then they would receive the honors credit, so the 4.5 GPA weighting versus the five?
Right, be a lower weighting than.
Okay. Does that matter what they get on the AP test? Do they need to get a four or a five?
No, no. If you take the test, you get the AP credit.
No matter how well you do on that?
Right.
Okay.
Well, but you wouldn't get the AP credit if you didn't get a four or a five, is that right?
No, no, no.
You get AP rating for the class.
Yeah. A lot of students take it to up their GPA.
Right.
But like you said, maybe they don't feel they would do well enough on the test. I'm just curious, if they do do poorly on the test, it doesn't then affect their GPA if they didn't well in the class?
No, no, no. Never has, no.
Okay. My other question is, currently, I have a son in honors physics right now, and it's been discussed in class that they've done a lot of the AP physics curriculum. From what I understood, well into the AP physics curriculum, that they basically could take the AP physics exam. Actually, some of the students who are doing well, which is not my son, are being encouraged to take that AP physics exam. That being said, this appears to be an AP class in everything but name. If those students take the exam, would they then receive the weighting on their GPA for an AP physics class?
I'm going to defer that question to our administration. It's a good question.
Yeah, it's a good question.
It's, the classes in honors class and the class, regardless of whether or not they take the AP exam, would still receive honors weighting, not AP weighting.
Okay, even though they're being taught the AP curriculum, it's an honors class?
They're being taught the honors curriculum. We do have an honors curriculum, and we have a separate AP curriculum. They are being taught the honors curriculum.
Okay.
Okay? And certainly, I would encourage any student who is doing well in an honors class, they can take an AP exam, even if they have not taken the AP course. So I would encourage a student, if they feel that they're well-prepared, certainly to take the exam. Nothing to lose, really.
Okay. Another question about the math, then. Now, I know right now, having children who are in the advanced eighth-grade math, so they're taking the Algebra I in eighth grade, that carries forward, carries forward. Usually, they end up then in AP Calculus in senior year. So you're saying to advance them a step further, they would start that in seventh grade, take AP Calculus junior year. What class, just out of curiosity, what class is that offered senior year for math, if they wanted to continue with math? Is there something above?
PC.
Well, they can take that right now.
Right. Well, that calculus III class.
Right, right. There's a possibility of calculus III, and we're looking into a variety of different courses that we could offer.
More statistics or probability.
Right, exactly. Stats, something like that.
There's a lot of different college-level types of courses.
Yeah, I was curious as which.
Analytical geometry, you could Theory of Numbers. There's a lot of different, interesting math courses for a kid that's at that level, absolutely.
Okay, cool. All right, go ahead. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Bovary.
John Bovary, 1210 Harbor Club Drive. Let's stay with this. Phil, is your committee student achievement structure, is that committee meet open to the public?
Could be, yeah. I mean, I don't know. Is it?
It hasn't been.
No, it hasn't been, but could it be? I think this is a question.
I mean.
Committee meetings, Mr. Bovary, are generally not open to the public. No quarm exists. It's possible that there are some circumstances in some districts, for example, budget committees under, in particular times of year, may meet publicly. But generally speaking, they're not public meetings.
Okay, thank you. Could you open it to public?
Yeah, I don't, fundamentally, I don't have any problem with that.
Yeah, no, I mean, there's great ideas here. I mean, I've spoken to you about this since 2006, when you challenged me why Caitlin didn't take the AP exam.
I challenged you, Mr. Bovary?
You challenged me, right? You lost that one, too. And Phil has got involved in it, too. And it's still the same thing, right? I can make a case that all you're doing is worrying about your measurements. As you said here, the measurement of the high school, right? The performance of the school, and you're losing track of the kids' concerns, right? There are plenty of good reasons to go through an AP class, get straight A's, and look the teacher in the eye and say, I don't want to take your exam. And you're penalizing the kids right now for that decision. And I guess you can tell me why you feel the need to penalize the kid.
But I think what we want to do, what the goal is, is to encourage kids to take the AP. I never understood.
Yeah, I get it. You want the numbers higher for the district. But that's penalizing the kid.
But that helps the students, too, if the district is viewed by the college board to be, you know, many people have always compared us to other districts around here. And I've asked this question, and you and I have discussed this years ago, about white kids born in the same hospital, they go to school in one district, another district, and this other kid.
18 years later, they don't look the same.
That's right. They don't look the same. And you look at it, and we did an analysis of that, and you look at the number of AP courses, and the number of kids that take that AP courses, and the number of kids that test, the college board looks at that favorably. And that's always been our motivation, not to penalize a kid. I think we want to encourage the kid. And I feel that a student, especially a high-level student that's taking an AP class or to take that AP test. Now, we polled the teachers, there were a number of teachers that agreed with us. They should be taken.
For years, as recognized, the administration has disagreed with you. For years, the administration has disagreed with that approach, as I think Kevin just pointed out a few minutes ago.
Right.
And now the philosophy seems to change.
Well, we have new administrators and, you know, new set of eyes.
Yeah, I get it. I haven't shared philosophy with Dr. Labby yet, right? You know? But each kid is going to have a unique situation, right? You know, to them. And you might like their rationale for not taking the exam, but you're going to penalize the grade point average.
Well, I don't look at it that way.
Well, you are going to penalize them. Okay, listen, I'm not here trying to talk about my kid.
I understand, I understand.
You know, she's dumb, but I'll use that as an example. In 2006, Caitlin was in AP Chem, AP Bio, and I said, she's all tested out, because she had me as a dad, and she took too many SATs, right? You know? But that's all, that's the primary thing the college cared about, was not her AP scores, but her SAT scores. She said, Dad, I'm all tested out. Why am I taking these APs? Why are these teachers making me take the APs? Not me, encouraging her to take them, right? And I looked into it long and hard, and you and I discussed it, and it was a rationale, well, if you get three, four, or five, or whatever the minimum score is, you don't have to take chemistry in college. You get to clip out, so to speak, of chemistry. Well, no offense to Sereville or East Brunswick or any other. I told my daughter, I don't care if you get a six, and the scale is one to five, you ain't skipping Chemistry I if you're going to be a chemistry major at college.
And I would never recommend any kid to do that if you're going to.
Well, that was the rationale why somebody would take the test, so you can save a few bucks in college by not taking a class. And I don't know, but my kids went to college, and they paid the same whether they took 12 credits, 15 credits, or 18 credits. As long as you're a full-time enrolled kid in college, it was the same thing I paid. So I wasn't saving anything for missing a class. I paid the same, and I didn't think, I should be certain that they got everything they needed in this school to skip William and Mary's Chemistry I, okay? So again, that's the rationale that might work for some kids. But if that kid, if right now, you're telling me, if my kid was in the school, and we made that decision, you're going to lower her quality points for that class that she passed and got an A. That seems to be unnecessarily penalizing the kids. And I'm sorry for the public, just let me come to the meeting, and I'll share all the thoughts there, and not bore the public, okay?
Okay.
Block scheduling, please be real careful on math in high school. As you know, I've taught in, you know, half dozen districts in the state, and we're going to take a real magical math teacher to do a dog and pony show for 90 minutes, okay? It works great for science labs. Be real careful in a math environment. I've been forced to teach that way, and it's not fun, right? I think I might have covered it there. Boom, boom, boom. Thank you very much. If that meeting's open to the public, if you can let me know. Phil said it'd be great.
Yeah, could I just, the thing with the money, and I'm sure my daughter was in the same boat as your daughter, so, you know, and I look at it differently. The money, there are a lot of students that can save money, because I know of students in schools where my children did attend that got a whole semester off because they scored well on many exams. So the money does play into effect for a score and well?
For some families, sure, absolutely, no doubt.
Right, but you're looking at, like, say, the chemistry as a majoring in chemistry, and I would agree with you. If you're majoring in chemistry, I would encourage my child to take the chemistry, too. But I could look at, say, my kid maybe is majoring in chemistry, but got that four or five in English, and now can contest out of that and get that credit for that. So when you look at a major, I can tend to agree, but if it's out of your major, I don't see any downside to skipping that class in college if you've already had that credit for it in high school.
Right, I'm just about, I'm not, I agree with you on everything. I just don't see why we need to penalize the grade point average of our kids in this building.
But you're only, you look at it as a penalty, but if you take that test, as Charlene had asked the same thing, and you don't score well, you will not be penalized. You're still going to get that AP credit.
You're going to make them take the test.
Oh, paying for it.
I guess you can't make them.
God, I.
Yeah, I mean, we can't make them do it.
Well, you're going to make their grade point average go down, right?
But I would imagine.
Good luck to you. I just hope there's another parent out there in this graduating class that would do what I would do.
But John, I would imagine any kid that finds themselves in that situation would just take the test.
Right.
Just take it.
No, or they'll let you, tell you no thanks.
Okay, well.
Okay. Which I'm sure Caitlin did, her teachers. Football, because that's all I thought I was coming up here. I didn't know we had all this good curriculum stuff going on. That's good, right? Back in November, I think I came here and asked, and, you know, Kevin was at the board at the time, Dr. Labby took the floor, and I said, can we get a timeline on when some decisions would be made? And at that time, I asked about, when are these current kids going to be told they might have a football program back in the year so they can make that decision about transferring or not? Dr. Labby said, well, wrap that up in January. Great job, that was wrapped up in January. So I guess it's time for the next question, right? The only thing I think is left on the table is Mr. George Najar, both as a teacher and as a coach, right? I'm not here to declare my public view. I think everybody knows it. If not, just call me, I'll tell you. Do we have a timeframe where we might have closure on that any time in the near future?
Well, as you know, we can't comment about individual personnel in public, but I can tell you.
I'll retract the name.
That there'll be some movement in the very near future.
Good. Thank you.
Hi, Lisa Reback, 7 Charles Street. I wasn't going to say anything tonight, but then I heard Rosetta Stone in K through second for Spanish. I just wanted to know what the rationale was for that.
Oh, before the Dr. Labby?
The rationale is to use that software, which is very powerful and it's very individualized. Many of our students in language arts participate in centers, literacy centers, math centers, learning centers. That's an opportunity for them to get the base that they need for that language prior to working with a staff member beginning at the third grade. So we're looking for a software system that will allow us to integrate into the natural instructional repertoire of our teachers, the language foundation that they'll need to be successful in a third-grade classroom taught by a Spanish teacher.
So then how would that look, be different than what's going on in the elementary schools now?
It would provide greater flexibility for our teachers. And it would give us the opportunity to have an additional, use a special such as computers.
Okay.
We talked earlier about the fact that we really feel that it's important for our students to have computers once a week. If you look at special schedules, you only have a certain number of specials to provide a student during the course of a week. So in order for a child to get the maximum amount of time that we feel that they need in a computers class, decisions have to be made. And we feel that utilizing a software like that will, again, provide an opportunity for our kids to get the foundation that they need for that language within their instructional repertoire of what goes on during the course repertoire of what goes on during the course of a normal day, utilizing the center's approach. And as we stated earlier, that was a discussion, that's not a decision that's been made yet, it was a discussion that we had during this meeting.
So what would a push-in Spanish class look like? The teacher would just be into the classroom?
Yeah.
So it's not?
It's pushing in, you push in during, you know, during either language arts or math instructional time. We were, we want to focus on creating larger blocks of time within the classroom. So it's pushing in, and it's, and it's basically team teaching with the classroom teachers that are in there. And that's going to be real important, too, for our children with disabilities. Sometimes what happens is, when it's a special, you know, children with disabilities, there's only one teacher in there. Normally, if they get in-class resource center, they're at a little bit of a disadvantage. Now, if the Spanish teacher pushes into an in-class resource center, there's actually three teachers in there to assist with language learning.
Well, she's not going, she's not, she's going into 3rd grade, so my, I guess, as you were talking, I had another question. So you're basically would be replacing the Spanish special with like a computer special?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else in the public would like to speak?
Hello, Sarah McGraw, 106 Nicol Avenue. I'd just like to speak a little bit more towards the AP testing situation, and maybe possibly offer a suggestion to the student achievement committee. Has the, the question been, has it come up about possibly if our AP students were to take the AP exam, exempting them from their final exam in the course?
We had discussed that. I think the biggest obstacle was the timing because of the test versus the final exam. That was one of the biggest obstacles that we had heard back, because we talked about that once before.